Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the March 26th meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Chaplain Billy Braff of Trinity Downtown at Trinity Evangelistic Lutheran Church located at 123 East Livingston Street in downtown Orlando. And Reverend Billy has served at Trinity for three years as Associate Pastor and Pastor of Urban Missionary. Pastor? Try it again Reverend Billy. Three years as Associate Pastor and Urban Missionary. I got that out. Okay, sorry about that. So the church has been in our community and serving our community for 93 years. It's involved in serving our homeless population. It hosts the offices of iDignity as well as Compassion Corner, provides a daily respite for the homeless on its campus, also offers an excellent private school. After the invocation, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance today led by District Two Commissioner Tony Ortiz. If everyone will join me and stand please.
We pray. Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given to us here in this city beautiful. We thank you, Lord, for all the good gifts you give to us, especially this city. Lord, we pray that this day you would keep all of us safe, especially our police and fire and emergency personnel. We ask you, Lord, that you would bless this council, our mayor, and all city officials, and that the decisions we make today would be pleasing in your sight and would lead this city to be an open, loving, and caring city for all who live and visit it. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum?
Certainly.
Note that we changed it up a little bit. The clerk is down there, so we'll see if we can get the roll call right.
Commissioner Diamond, Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Linum.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Wow, it worked out okay from the podium, didn't it?
What do you know?
Okay. Let's take up for consideration the minutes from the March 12th, 2012 Agenda Review and City Council meetings. Motion by Commissioner Linum to approve the minutes, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, and so the motion carries. We will now move, and that's why Alana was down at the podium, because she is first up with a 25-year service award.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I've had the honor of working with Don Price for the last eight years, and I'm pleased to commemorate his 25 years of incredible service to the city this afternoon. I'm even more excited that I'm not announcing his retirement at this time, and that he will be with us for a long time to come, I hope. He really doesn't need an introduction for those of us at City Hall, but for those watching on the television and in our audience, I just want to tell you a little bit about what Don does. He's affectionately known as Donnie P., and he's often mistaken for Brad Pitt here at City Hall. You'll see what I mean on the screen in a minute. Don began his career here at the city when former city clerk Grace Tuning hired him, he was 19-years-old, to manage the records department and supervise the one employee in the department. He claims he applied because he wasn't qualified to work anywhere else. He spent the next 16 years building the records department and growing it to an all-time high of six employees and taking over half of a floor of City Hall. In 2003, when Mayor Dyer first took office, Don was asked to take over as Cemetery Sexton in addition to his records position. Six months later, he was asked to fill in as Bureau Chief of Fleet and of Facilities, which was two separate bureaus, in addition to serving as Archives Manager and Cemetery Sexton. So in this capacity, he was doing four jobs. He says he spent about two hours on each of them every day, and he did that for eight months. He said he got a little bit of a raise, and he saved the city about $80,000. So that'll just show you his negotiating skills, or lack thereof. Currently, he spends his mornings at City Hall as Records and Archives Manager and his afternoons at Greenwood Cemetery as our Sexton. In Records and Archives, he's responsible for the Record Storage Center as well as overseeing the city's compliance with public records requests. And in the 10 years that we've been tracking our requests, he's handled nearly 16,000 of them, and he's proud to say he's only been sued twice. Not too bad. His staff is now three and a half employees, he's the half, and that's down from a all-time high of six. As Cemetery Sexton, he's responsible for overseeing the management of one of the city's greatest treasures, and that is Greenwood Cemetery, and he's really taken it into the 21st century using technology to better manage it and creatively market this city asset. In 2005, after supervising the surveying of the entire cemetery to locate unused burial spaces that he could immediately sell, he opened up a new area for sale for the first time in many years and had a waiting list of customers prior to opening day. He's also organized volunteer cleanup programs as well as tree donation programs to replace the 148 trees that were lost at the cemetery in the three hurricanes in 2004. One of his most popular innovations is a walking history tour at Greenwood on the full moon Friday of each month. This past Friday, he conducted a special tour for 100 science fiction writers attending an international conference here at the Airport Hyatt. He's also on Twitter. He tweets fun facts about the cemetery daily and has tons of followers, another clever marketing tool, since he has no marketing budget. He's even the subject of a comic strip. Wow, that was good timing, Ed. You know, I've always thought of him as a cartoon character, haven't you? There he is. No, in all seriousness, he was the recipient of the prestigious Mayor's Leadership Award for Excellence in Management in 2006. He's published several articles about cemeteries in both state and national trade publications, again, free publicity for the cemetery, and he's also a much celebrated speaker at the Mayor's City Academy. Opening session, he gives a tour of City Hall and shares fun facts, which if he doesn't know, he makes up. He's the proud father of four children, Caleb, age 23, Chelsea, age 22, Caitlin, age 19, and Chloe, age 13. When he's not working on the weekends, he enjoys wearing camo and smoking meat on his property in West Orange County in the wilderness. He was born with the gift of gab and a great sense of humor and a fantastic ability to retain information, so he's perfect for his job. One of his greatest contributions to the city is his love of and knowledge of its history. He is our unofficial historian. He constantly receives praise for his wonderful customer service, his compassion, his caring nature, and his can-do attitude. One customer wrote to me, "It restores my faith in people to find someone like you who's willing to go out of your way for people and just be a real person." Another one wrote, "You are a gifted administrator who cares about others. The city of Orlando is lucky to have you. Mayor and Commissioners, I could not agree more. Please join me in honoring Don Price for his 25 years of valuable service."
I'm gonna save this. Give that to my mama, if she likes that. But usually my name is followed by, "That boy ain't right." So it was a nice thing, and I did. I always joke that I wasn't qualified for anything, so I came to work for the city. And y'all have treated me well for 25 years. I've grown up with a lot of you. I'm, you know, running around. I was the kid. So, and I think some of them still call me the kid around here, but thanks again. Thanks, Mayor.
You never left. What are you talking about?
Okay, Marcia's up for the next one.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and congratulations, Donnie P. He always keeps us smiling. It is my distinct pleasure at this time to introduce a very important proclamation for World Autism Awareness Month. Mayor, after you read the proclamation, Henry Wright, who is one of our strongest advocates and local volunteers for autism awareness, will come up and give a brief acceptance of the proclamation on behalf of World Autism Month and introduce other special guests who are here today before taking a photo with you, Mayor.
Thank you, Marcia. I have a City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas autism is a developmental disability that can significantly impair an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal, nonverbal, and reciprocal communication; and whereas autism spectrum disorders currently affect 1 in 110 children and 1 in 70 boys, affecting four times as many boys as girls in the United States; and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention have called autism a national public health crisis; and whereas autism is a very common developmental disability affecting an estimated 500,000 individuals nationwide; and whereas on December 18th, 2007, the United Nations General Assembly adopted Resolution 62-139, World Autism Awareness Day by unanimous consent; and whereas World Autism Awareness Month is intended to inform the general public about the global health crisis of autism, to stress the importance of early diagnosis and early intervention, and to celebrate the unique talents and qualities of individuals with autism; and whereas autism is a lifelong condition in which most costs occur in adulthood, creating an enormous economic impact, now therefore I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando hereby do proclaim the month of April as World Autism Awareness Month in the City of Orlando. Mayor, Commissioner, I just want to take a moment to say thank you very much, especially starting from Mr. Brooks' office, that we had this opportunity to come, and this is not just for us and our family, but for all of our citizens. We're just very happy the city beautiful is doing such a great thing, especially on next Tuesday, where we're lighting it up blue with the arena, with downtown, with the Lechiola. We started out in Winter Garden area, and so this is really a big thing for us. I've just got to inform that the National Space Station is going to light it up blue on the 2nd, so there's a lot of things, it's global, that's happening, but it couldn't be more impactful than happening right here in our own backyard over Orlando. Just like to, there's a few folks here with us that just flew in, as a matter of fact, from Autism Speaks. We're very happy that Tracy has come down. She had some business and it worked out for us. She's a strong advocate that any time we need something, we call on her. We know it's a nonprofit business and just a lot of great resources. Of course, I have my lovely wife, Mimi, who makes it happen for me each and every day. 12 years of being married, thank you, honey. And of course, well, first, before we get to the honor student here, our cousin Vanessa is here via DC Homeland Security in the Defense Department. She's joined us and just been a strong advocate for us as well. And then my son, Victor.
Hi.
Hi, Victor.
Hi, Victor.
Victor is just, sorry. Victor's just walking proof of what can happen. Just stick together, a lot of prayers, and we call him now at school Victorious. He's doing well. He is excelling in everything in school in third grade, and this is what the awareness brings about attention and what we can do. So again, I want to thank you, and Mayor, thank you very much. It's still there. Okay, let's move into the mayor's update, and I'm going to call on Alana to provide an update on the upcoming city municipal election.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city general election is fast approaching. It's a week from tomorrow, April 3rd, and we have elections for mayor and commissioner in districts 1, 2, 4, and 6. Early voting for the election started today, Monday the 26th, and will run until next Sunday, April the 1st, at the Orange County Supervisor of Elections Office at 119 West Cayley. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, Saturday, 9 to 5, and Sunday, 11 to 3. If you plan to vote by going to the polls on Election Day, April 3rd, please note that because of redistricting, you may be in a new city commission district, and you may be in a new polling place. So you need to find out where you go to vote before Election Day. I'm going to say that again, because it's really, really important. Because of redistricting, you might be in a new district, and you might be at a new polling place, so you need to find out where you need to go. If you're a registered voter in this city, you should have gotten one of these in the mail in the last day or two, or maybe you'll get it today, but it's a sample ballot and a notice of polling place location. Has a map on it, has a sample ballot, so it should give you all the information you need. If for some reason you didn't get it, you can call, you can go online and determine where your polling place is at the city's website, or you can call my office, 407-246-2251, or the Supervisor of Elections Office, which is 407-836-2070. If it's more convenient for you, you still have time to order an absentee ballot, but the deadline is fast approaching. It's this Wednesday, March 28th, at 5:00 PM. So that's just two days from now. You can order it right now by calling the supervisor's office, and again, that's 407-836-2070, or going online to his website, which is orangecountyvotes.com. You have to turn in your absentee ballot before 7:00 on Election Day, so don't forget that. And be sure to vote on April 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. So a couple of things I'd like to recap. Couple of Saturdays ago, on March 17th, we hosted my 7th Annual Neighborhood and Community Summit, and it was a tremendous success. We had the most attendance we have ever had, over 300 neighborhood leaders and volunteers, and I keep running into people that tell me how much they enjoyed it, Michelle and Marcia, and how useful the information was. We had 43 different exhibits, 21 different workshops, 25 different presenters, a lot of good informations. I conducted two Ask Your Mayor workshops, and it's interesting, it was a totally different mix and different questions in each of those two workshops, and we gave out two awards. One was the Community Builder Award to the First United Methodist Church of Orlando, and the second was the Neighborhood Champion Award to Chami Chappell from the Spring Lake Manor Neighborhood Association in the Rock Lake Neighborhood, and those awards were created to recognize great contributions of our neighborhood volunteers. Yesterday, if you were up at 7:30, you heard a couple of booms probably. I understand that people heard the blast as far away as Lake Underhill and maybe even farther than that, which was surprising to me, because it didn't sound that loud right next to it, but it marked the end of an era with the implosion of the Amway Arena. And Ed, you have some photos going of the implosion?
It was pretty exciting. I was on the south side when it came down, and that dust plume ended up coming towards us, which I had not exactly anticipated, but we were able to take harbor over in the fire for a few minutes, and the Channel 13 reporter was out there in a dark suit, which was no longer dark when we came back. So next time you're dealing with an implosion, a light suit might be the appropriate attire, but it also marks the beginning of really kind of a groundbreaking for our Creative Village. We have a $10 million Tiger II grant that will begin construction of the road network, so that brings immediate jobs, and then the expansion of a limo route north and south that will connect the law school and the federal courthouse with the rest of the limo system. So much more to come on the Creative Village. Congratulations to the Homeless Services Network and First Baptist Church of Orlando, who hosted our, one of our annual Project Homeless Connects on last Friday, and nearly 700 people received a myriad of services, so I want to thank Pastor Youth for hosting at First Baptist and all the volunteers, including our OFD and Solid Waste Division. Items of note on the agenda, we have several items approving grants for OPD, and we will continue to make good use of federal funding when we can get it. And on today's agenda is an ordinance for the Hope Campus PD, and Bishop Wiggins is here with us today. Thank you for being here, Bishop, and thank you for the partnership as we continue to work to redevelop the west side of Orlando and the Hope Church and the Not-for-Profit associated with it has been a great partner with the city of Orlando, so thank you for being here. You know what? Why don't you stand up? You deserve a little love here. Okay, and I just want to read a letter that I got. This is from the Las Vegas Events Organization, and their president, and it's addressed to me. Dear Mayor, it's a pleasure to meet you, and I wanted to let you know about the experience I had touring the Citrus Bowl and the Amway Center. First of all, congratulations on all you've done to develop and build your venues. I am president of a company that secures all of the major events for Las Vegas. I am truly envious of the great venues in Orlando. I'm sure you've heard this quote, "You can design and build the most wonderful place in the world, but it takes people to make the dream a reality." And that was, of course, Walt Disney. It is my favorite quote, and as I boarded the plane to return to Las Vegas, it occurred to me that Amway Center delivered on both. I am sure it is no accident. Alan Johnson gave us a thorough tour of both the Citrus Bowl and the Amway Center, and I have been in almost every major arena and stadium in the country. The Amway Center is easily my favorite. You have designed and built a first-class facility, but I believe it is your people and the operation that sets you apart from your competition. I sincerely appreciate the hospitality and the opportunity to witness what you have accomplished in Orlando. Sincerely, Pat Christensen, President. It's kind of nice to get a little recognition from our competition out there in Vegas, so a little additional icing on the cake from the All-Star Weekend. With that, we will move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda has a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council, and we give each of the members of the council an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda as well as updating you on items of importance from their districts. We rotate the order that they go in, and we are going to start today with District 2, Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I want to congratulate Don Price again. He left, but I think one of the things we failed to mention is that along with the history that he likes to tell, he also has a huge collection of pictures about cemeteries all over the place, all over the nation. And as, in some cases, it's kind of scary, in some other cases, it's kind of neat to see what kind of pictures and what kind of gravestones he has photographed. So congratulations, he does a great job for us, and he, whatever he goes, he puts our name really high. So, on Thursday, March 15th, instead of our regular bimonthly meeting, our Neighborhood Leaders Council members were present during the soft opening of the Park of the Americas Community Room. The park will be going through renovations, and we're hoping to open it by early next year. I want to sincerely thank John Rayhill and John Parks, they were there, and the rest of the staff from our great city of Orlando. They were there, we had a great evening with our residents, managers, and presidents of associations. We have great plans for that park. We're going to open a doggy park, so we can have visitors from all over the city and hopefully the county and other areas. We're also going to have playground and a special area that's going to be made for to erect monuments of important people all over the Americas. So it's going to be a great chance for us to share not only our, what do you call, great people from different countries, but share values and stories about these great celebrities, to say the least. I joined the mayor and city staff in the 7th Annual Mayor Dyer's Neighborhood Summit on Saturday, March 17th. Once again, another great event. I had the chance to chat with lots of our neighborhood leaders who attended the summit, and they expressed to me how impressed they were about the event. So kudos to you, Mayor Dyer, and to the staff, they did a great, great job. Last Friday, along with Mayor Dyer, I also had the chance to attend a lunch meeting with the Puerto Rican Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank them for the hospitality. It was a great occasion to share not only our views, but our accomplishments and what they're planning on doing. I want to congratulate Mrs. Maria Luyanda, who's the president and their board, they did a great job. This meeting was at a Cadillate Restaurant just north of Colonial, which they, by the way, have a great place, so if you are in the area, you might want to stop by and get some really good Spanish food. Last Saturday, we had Mr. Shaquille O'Neal stop by the Englewood Neighborhood Center to watch children play basketball. He doesn't have an idea of the effect he has on his kids. They are still talking about him, and we're very proud that every so often he comes back and visits our people in our communities. So we want to thank him. His dad as well, or his stepdad, I should say, Mr. Phil Harrison, is an annual sponsor of the youth basketball program at the Englewood Community Center, so I want to thank him also for doing that every year. Once again, the IRS has been working with our community, and they are assisting our residents to do their taxes for free at our community center. They are at the Englewood Neighborhood Center on Thursdays and Sundays until April the 15th. So those of you that are listening, you have not done your taxes, of course, personal taxes, they don't do commercial or corporations, they do personal taxes for free for our community. Last but not least, I would like to congratulate my aide, Anna Cruz, who is a finalist on the 5th Annual La Presa Hispanic Woman Who Make a Difference in Central Florida. The winner will be selected this Saturday, and I wish her the best of luck. She deserved that and a lot more. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Stewart, District 3.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me cover a couple of quick things. Congratulations on the Amway implosion. It was exciting to be out there and watch that and see the groundbreaking, getting ready for the Creative Village. I appreciate that. Saturday afternoon, I had an opportunity to spend some time with a dear friend of mine, Ellen Stevenson. She did some research, or did some cancer walk as part of the Hooters for Scooters. She did this little separate thing. I think I missed you out there for a few minutes. I apologize that we didn't get together, but she was there. She is a cancer survivor of nine years of brain cancer. She's a wonderful inspiration. She's an old high school friend of mine, but just a wonderful inspiration that just got me all excited about trying to help out as much as I can. Got a note today, I think most of y'all saw it, I want to share it briefly about Lou Gardens. I thank you, Robert, for sending me the information. We had over 10,000 guests at Lou Gardens, March 9th, 17th, and 18th, for the annual plant sale, with more than 50 vendors throughout Florida. Appreciate your work, Robert. It was wonderful. Once again, if you guys always do it, and I always get a chance to go get my orchids from the same guy every year, it's just great. We also shared with us, and I'll share with y'all, is that more than 1,300 pounds of food comes out of the gardens, the demonstration gardens they have, and that goes to area food banks, and I know that in the past, we provided much of that to the Christian Service Center, and we've used that for our Daily Bread program. I appreciate that. So we just had a really great opportunity to just showcase another jewel in our community, and I appreciate Robert's leadership. Along the same lines, May, I'm sorry, April 2nd, at 10:00 will be the monthly date night, and on the 6th, they'll be showing the popular movie Twilight, so you get a chance to come enjoy that. April 7th, from 10:00 to 2:00, will be the Orlando Science Center's annual Excellent Easter Adventure with Easter Bunny himself. Easter Adventure with Easter Bunny himself. You get a chance to come down there and enjoy the Science Center as well. On the agenda today, let me share a couple of things. First, congratulations to Don Price. I've known Don forever, as all of us have, but I've got a chance to do the tour with him on several occasions of the history and through the Greenwood Cemetery Tour. And he always gets nervous when I go around because I'm the only other guy that may know more about some of those people than he does. So, we have a great time teasing each other after it's over. Today, on C one, Commissioners, we'll be approving the annexation of the Wawa Store over at Silver Star and John Young Parkway. It's a great addition to District Three and to the city of Orlando. And on item C three today, we'll also be approving the West Side Neighborhood Master Plan over in Baldwin Park, as well as a Jefferson at Baldwin Park apartment. With a lot of discussion about some of these projects, I just want to remind the Commission that these were projects that were approved in the very beginning of Baldwin Park. They're now just coming online, and just want to remind you of those things. They've already been handled, just as the last one we discussed. So, those things will be going through the process, and we're seeing a really strong rental market and a resurgence in the Baldwin Park area. It's good to have these things kind of come online. We're almost built out, and when we are, it'll be another great place to live in the city of Orlando. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Four, Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to congratulate Donnie P., my favorite redneck. And one of the best things I think he ever did was Mayor Langford's funeral. He actually called in a lot of favors because Mayor Langford couldn't afford to have an elaborate funeral, and he had a horse-drawn, you know, hearse, a glass hearse. It was really beautiful. So, I teased Donnie P. I'm like, well, when I get ready to go, I want him to pull an aquarium with a burrow and a midget, so. And Donnie P. will understand the significance of that story. On April third, please, everybody get out and vote. You know, I think we're going to have a pretty low turnout because it's a standalone election, but it's really, really important to choose your leadership. And we did have a lot of changes in terms of redistricting and changes in polling places. A lot of folks are confused, so please make sure you check that before you go out to vote, because I know the specially in Lake Como area, their polling places, Thornton Park polling places changed, Colonial Town even, they're not voting at Lou Gardens like they usually do. So, again, there's a lot of changes, so I encourage everybody, you know, to make sure you know where you're supposed to go vote. It was my pleasure to ride in Scooters for Hooters last weekend. I think they raised over a hundred thousand dollars for women who need exams and medical assistance. That's just a great event that keeps growing in our city, and kudos to Libby's Legacy, started by a woman who lost her mother to breast cancer, Robin Maynard, and they just did a great job putting on a super event. I'd also like to congratulate Meryl Evans chick, who is a ninety, who is turning, who turned ninety years old over the weekend. She is the founder of the Epilepsy Foundation and just has done so much for the Lake Yola Heights neighborhood too, and we gave her a proclamation to honor her. And again, happy birthday, Ms. Evans chick, and we hope you make it another ninety. Mills Fifty Green Fest happened over the weekend, composters and rain barrels for this great sustainability event. So, they're doing great things over in Mills Fifty. And on the agenda today, on item H three, the problematic crosswalks. I'd like to tell staff that Washington at Summerlin has certainly been a problem, and if we could, you know, get some enforcement there, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian activity, and unfortunately, people don't pay attention to the crosswalks. So, if we can get some attention there, that would be great. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Five, Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few announcements. Mayor, for the bringing down of the Amway Center, I basically shut all my windows, turned off the AC, because I'm allergic to everything up here in this district, let alone around the whole of that dust. But it was a sight for sore eyes. I saw it on TV, so congratulations. And at the summit, I was sorry I couldn't be there. I really had a very, very busy two weeks. But Marcia was there. Nobody let her speak for me, but she was there representing five, so thank you, Marcia. And again, I think on yesterday, on Sunday, we had a big event in the Lyman family that prevented me from going to a number of things yesterday. My newest grandbaby was dedicated at New Covenant, and I served brunch. I cooked it myself. Well, no, that's not quite true, but we had a great day celebrating the baby's dedication. And I do want to bring to everyone's attention, because I think it's going to happen again. On Saturday, one of the biggest events we've had here, other than with the Treasury, Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, was NACA, with Congresswoman Brown. Brought them to the Rosen Center, I think Saturday and Sunday. For people who needed modifications, there were no costs to these modifications on a Sunday. We even had a preapproval for home loans. People can get loans again to purchase new homes or old homes. And in District Five, we've got several homes for sale, especially one we just voted on last council meeting, that we need to get these homes sold that are being rehabbed in our Neighborhood Stabilization Program Three and Two and One that are still kind of lingering around. So, I really want everyone to know there are opportunities there to purchase these new homes and to make sure you get help to save your home if you need mortgage modification. And a special thanks to Congresswoman Brown for that. And if you missed it this past weekend, you can go online, call my office, and Marcia can give you that information. And the NACA is out of Charlotte, North Carolina, so we can get you hooked up very easily. Another announcement, I think it was Saturday, because we couldn't do a couple of things. You know, Virginia Whitaker over at Metroplan has, she's over Awesome Ministries. These are young girls that does the formal exchange every year to help them have their prom gowns. And TV anchor, I think she's an anchor, Christine Webb, remember, for the Haitian event? She was stuck over in Haiti during the earthquake, who was an awesome mistress of ceremony. And Norine Downs with the Department of Transportation and myself were there to help celebrate with these young girls. As soon as I left, NACA went over there to help move that project right along. But if you need help, there is help out there for young girls who can't afford their gowns for prom, and it's through the Awesome Ministries. A couple more announcements, and I'll be done. I've just come to council, and this, as a matter of fact, the agenda meeting, because over in Eatonville, as we speak now, is a community forum, and I want to say a special thanks, Chief Rooney, for getting me a ride over there. That's the first time I've been in a car with a police officer. I wasn't scared to death. Great driver to get over there because to bring attention to the stand-your-grandlaw and to this community, to be concerned, whichever side you fall on, you really ought to know what the law is, and we ought to be quite humane about this. So, I'm one of those that believe on the side that Trayvon Martin was profiled and injured and killed with no reason was on. I mean, Skittles and an iced tea shouldn't result in a death. I also want to bring to your attention that, a couple of items on the agenda. Blocker Avenue, thanks, we're going to change that street to Blocker over there in front of the school board and in front of our city garage. But there are other, and I've been asked about this, there are other great names of heroes in our community, Alzo Reddick. We've got to find a street for him. We've got to find a street from now forward, but it's not as easy as everybody wants. I get requests all the time to name a street after someone, and it's not that easy when you don't own the property. It's just made easier because we are very agreeable to changing the piece in front of the city property and, of course, in front of the school board property. I also want to announce today that, I think it's H three, Commissioner just mentioned on regarding pedestrian safety program. It's really, really important to keep our pedestrians safe because there are national programs that will impact our dollars depending on how, the programs that we put in place about keeping folks safe. And I know when I'm out walking most mornings, that's really, really important that we keep those areas marked off and to alert our drivers that they really need to watch out for pedestrians so that we're not run over all the time. The other, of course, Bishop, I am so happy to see you. This vision for, it's now in District Six, but it started in Five, was, started with this bishop and his father, who was the first senior pastor, and it's gone on for years. Started with the conversation regarding the cell towers and has moved rapidly with great assistance and partnership from the city. So, Mayor Dyer was correct to ask you to stand because this is a partnership that I have been intimately involved in for over twelve years, and I'm very, very happy about that. And of course, I want to bring to your attention that people need to pay attention to what's going on at the Supreme Court regarding affordable health care. As a two-time cancer survivor and haven't had every other kind of allergy and any kind of, you know, being a black female, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, because I absolutely love barbecue, and it's been a real rough deal. We need to pay attention to the argument in the Supreme Court regarding affordable health care. And having had two sons, and one of them came back from college, I wish I could have kept him on my insurance. So, I think it would be in all of our best interest to read up on things for ourselves, listen to the debate, and make the right decision as what's right for you, and stop making decisions that are against your best interests. So, thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six, Commissioner Rains.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Don Price on his twenty-five-year service with the city of Orlando. And also, right into the agenda, item H two, the application for a grant for the human trafficking, to combat human trafficking. I think this is an excellent idea, Chief, and specifically for OPD and MBI. And this is an opportunity for us to take a very comprehensive approach and proactive approach to combat human trafficking. We just had an event at Lake Yola highlighting this, so I imagine a lot of those supporters would be happy to see that the city of Orlando is right there supporting them and really dealing with this issue in a very positive way. Then also, item H three, the highway safety grant for the pedestrian safety. There are so many times that I've seen cars, you know, when pedestrians are in the right-of-way and cars are turning right, you know, they fail to yield, and we need to do something a little bit more. There are some intersections that have no turn on red when you have pedestrians in the right-of-way, so these are the kinds of things that we need to be a little bit more proactive about as well. We need to protect those pedestrians that are in the crosswalk. And the vehicles, really, it seems like that they're the enemy to the pedestrian, but everybody's in such a hurry to go nowhere, but we do need to protect our citizens. And then, obviously, for the traffic, H four, for the highway safety grant, for the traffic services for homicide investigations, this is a top-notch opportunity to move things forward because I know a lot of us love to see the investigators get through with their investigations quickly so we can open up the roadways and the highways. And sometimes it does take a little bit of time, and it's just unfortunate, but if we can speed it up, obviously, this is a good way to do business. And then, right into the events within the community. Mayor Dyer, congratulations on your Neighborhood Community Summit. It was a fantastic event. You had so many supporters there from the vendors that were there, and you had great support from your Commissioners too that were also there. And then, on that same night, I attended a fundraiser at the Mount Sinai Church there on Orange Center Boulevard, and this was an interfaith humanitarian service concert that was going on. So many young people were there participating. They had a national group called Committed there, and Dominique Methurin, who is the Vice President of this organization, invited me to be there. And what they're trying to do is raise funds to help build an academy there in Haiti as relates with the earthquake. And then, of course, on Monday, March nineteenth, the Old Fire Station Number Seven, we had the demolition that took place of Old Fire Station Number Seven, and this is located at six seventy-one South Golden Avenue. Richard Lorenz, CEO and owner of the Central Environmental Services, headed the demolition. Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Lori, and thank you, Cynthia Wilson, for being there on hand. And also, a very special thanks to Angelo Roman. He is the photographer with the Orlando Fire Department Fire and Rescue Unit for coming out on a short notice to take pictures of the event, so it went very well. Had an opportunity to get into the little machine there and kind of help knock down the building. So, this was a great event, and it's a perfect opportunity for us to show the community because I had one citizen in the wheelchair to come out and talk specifically about a building there that was vacant, and it belonged to the city, and it was going to become an ISO in the city if we didn't do something about it. And he was also recognizing that people were trespassing over in the area, trash and that kind of thing. So, with the building being down, now we're going to have some green space there until we can do something else with the property. And then, also, coming up is the District Six Spring to Health Bingo, Social, and Health Fair, and this is going to be Friday, March the thirtieth, from nine AM to twelve noon at the El Claudia Allen Senior Center. And this is my fourth annual seniors bingo competition and health fair that we're having, and we'll have four local senior centers that will participate, including the Claudia Allen Center, Rosemont, Callahan, and Rock Lake. Last year, Rosemont was first place in the bingo tournament for a second year in a row, and El Claudia Allen placed second. Twelve vendors will be on hand to provide health screenings, including blood pressure, glucose, cholesterol, spinal vein, diabetic fit checks, just to name a few. And I'd like to thank WellCare for sponsoring this event. And then, on Saturday, March the thirty-first, we will be hosting the Sixth Annual District Six Excellent Kids Health Fair and Easter Egg Hunt at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. Because of the increasing obesity epidemic among our children, today is thought to be a leading cause in the increase of juvenile diabetes in this country. The purpose of this event is to provide the city of Orlando residents of District Six an opportunity to take advantage of community resources and services to promote healthy living. Over twelve vendors will be on hand to provide health screenings for the children. Parents must be present for the health screening for children. And also, Adults Community Blood Center will be on hand to provide an opportunity for anyone to give the gift of life. Blood supply is at a critical low, and we encourage all to stop by the red bus. HIV testing will be provided also inside the Smith Center in a private office and in a private setting. And then, we will have the traditional Easter egg hunt, food, and entertainment will be provided, and all of our kids are involved with all ages. And then, I'd also like to say that I had an opportunity to meet with Bobby Price and his wife, Lillian Price, on Tuesday, March the twentieth, there at twenty-four oh three Willie Mays Parkway. Specifically, behind their house is a bike trail, and this bike trail, Chief, a lot of crime and vandalism goes on on the bike trail. The bike trail actually closes after dark, but many people are there on the trail. They're sitting on the benches, they're smoking and doing drugs, and also shooting and just causing disturbances. The people can't rest. But I'd like to thank Jim Hunt for coming out, the city engineer for coming out and meeting with the people because the fencing in the back, we're trying to determine who the fence actually belonged to because the kids have torn the fence down, and they're jumping the fence and into the property of the neighbors. So, with that, we need some help out there to protect the bike trail there in the Richmond Heights area, right there off of Willie Mays. The last thing that I have on March the twentieth was the Golf Channel Headquarters ribbon-cutting and street sign unveiling for the Golf Channel Drive. This event was very well-attended. Thank you, Mayor. You look great, even on the set there at the Golf Channel. And Arnold Palmer was also on hand to be with us for this event. It was a great event. City was very well-represented by economic development and others. Thank you all so much for making our city shine. Thank you all so much for making our city shine and making our city look great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll move to District 1, Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to add my voice to all those. Kudos and congratulations that everybody's already mentioned. I'd also like to add one that hasn't been mentioned. According to a recent news story I saw, one of our OPD officers deserves a special, a special thank you, I think, and that would be Officer Ishmael Hernandez, also known as Izzy Hernandez. According to the reports, Officer Hernandez was vacationing down at Jupiter Beach, and while he was there, a five-year-old boy was drowning in the ocean. And Officer Hernandez pulled him out of the water and gave him CPR, and the boy is expected to make a full recovery. So that is just a wonderful story, and I just wanted to pass along my thanks. And I know, I know those parents must be feeling, must be feeling great about Officer Hernandez and the city of Orlando. So it's wonderful, wonderful to hear about, and congratulations to them. Also, I would like to congratulate the new school superintendent, Dr. Barbara Jenkins, and wish her all the best. I think everybody's rooting for her to do a terrific job with the schools and continue to do a good, continue to build on the good work that Dr. Blocker has done with the school board. And I'm glad to see the name change for Revere Avenue later to become named after Ron Blocker. I think it's very appropriate and very well deserved. Speaking of schools, also, this is spring break week for Orange County public schools, so I'd like to encourage everybody to have a great time, but also be careful out there. I think when people are driving, things might be a little bit different, so I'd like to encourage everybody to be as safe as possible while they're driving. And then I'd also like to give a special thank you to one of the schools in my district. That would be Lake Nona High School Honor Society, which recently came out. About 45 or so of the students came out to Southport Park, also located in District 1, cleaned it up, did a lot of good work over there. And I want to thank all the students and their faculty advisors and everybody else that helped out for helping make the city a better place. So thank you to them. Also, thank you to, and a congratulations to the downtown South Main Street. They keep on going strong. They recently did an evening business networking and a morning coffee networking, and I just want to congratulate them for the good things they're doing. And then on the agenda, items, items H, all the, all the police grant items have already been talked about, but I wanted to congratulate and thank the Police Department for working on those important initiatives. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheen. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. That brings us to, how about CRA? So we will recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. There are two items of business. The first is accepting meeting minutes from the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board for January 25th, 2012. Is there a motion to accept those minutes? Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Thomas, the second item.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon to you and other members of the council. Item number two is approving the appointment of a new member to the Minority Women Entrepreneurial Business Assistant Advisory Board, or MIBA, as it's known. Since its inception in 2006, the Hispanic Business Initiative Fund has been a member of MIBA and has been represented by Mr. Andres Ruales. Mr. Ruales has recently taken an extended leave of absence from HBIF, and HBIF has proposed that Ms. Loretto Padilla be named as his replacement to the MIBA Advisory Board. The CRA Advisory Board voted, recommended approval of Ms. Padilla at its February 29th meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Any further business come before the CRA, Thomas?
There's none, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then the CRA will be adjourned, and we will reconvene the council meeting. And move to hearings, ordinances on second reading. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to the Florida Building Code, amending Article 1, Chapter 13, Orlando City Code to adopt the Florida Building Code 2010 edition, providing local administrative amendments to the Florida Building Code and ultimate design, wind speeds for buildings and other structures within the city, striking outdated and duplicative local technical amendments, providing for transmittal to the Florida Building Commission, severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ordinances, first read, number one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to a street name change, renaming Revere Avenue, generally located between West Concord Street and Alexander Place, to Blocker Avenue, directing amendments to the official maps of the city of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, corrections of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. Okay, when the planning board, actually, let me give credit to Chairman Sublett, who asked me about making this name change, which I think we all think is very appropriate. And when the planning board reviewed the application for the name change of Revere Avenue to honor Superintendent Blocker, they recommended that the street simply be named Blocker Avenue. And that is consistent with our city code's preference for understated and one-word street names. But to make it clear for posterity that who exactly we were honoring, has been suggested that we go ahead and name it Ron Blocker Avenue. So do I have a motion requesting?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ings. So on the motion to amend the ordinance to include Ron in Ron Blocker Avenue, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so that motion carries. And we're back on the, the ordinance itself with the amendment attached. All in favor of that motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Congratulations, Ron Blocker. Well, I guess we'll have one more reading of that. We can do a little more celebration. Okay, number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida zoning certain land generally located to the east of the intersection of South Goldenrod Road and Hoffner Avenue and comprised of approximately 1.54 acres of land as planned development district with the aircraft noise overlay district by adding the land to the existing and adjacent Orlando Corporate Center planned development district, directing amendment to the official zoning map series, providing for severability, corrections of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Diamond, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida amending the planned development zoning district regulations for certain real property generally located north of Columbia Street, south of Monte Carlo Trail, east of South Goldwyn Avenue, and west of South John Young Parkway comprised of 14.4 acres, more or less, amending the planned development district's development program, site plan, boundaries, and conditions of development, directing amendment to the official zoning map series, providing for severability, corrections of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ings. Second by Commissioner Sheen. Commissioner Linum wanted to end that one. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that you and Commissioner Linum stated earlier concerning the Hope Property and Bishop Wiggins and what they're trying to do. And I just really wanted to go on record, too, to say that this is a great opportunity for the Washington shores area. We see a lot of history as being rewritten in Washington shores, and I want to also make sure that Bishop Wiggins and the Hope Project understands that we all, and when I say we all, I mean the city council do care about what's happening there, and we really are very supportive, and we're thankful to you for all of the hard work that you all are doing to really make our community to be a greater community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ings. Further discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. One more reading, Bishop. Okay, that brings us to the conclusion of the official business of the Orlando City Council today. Thank you for tuning in or being present here in chambers.